Go ahead, do it.
Got six o'clock, folks. Before we get started, let's introduce Jody Bolz.
Jody Bolz.
Our new member, and I hope he can give us a tip, say what her name is and a little bit of background.
Uh, Carol Meyer. I'm second grade teacher. I knew nothing about anything when I first came on, so you guys, very, very helpful.
That's where we're gonna have to... Where are you from, Jody?
I live halfway between Gladbrook and Garland.
Oh.
On an acreage.
Well, yeah.
Yep, and Langaboth are my neighbors. Um, I'm 210th Street, which is the only gravel road that goes clear through from 63 to T-47, Crystal Cemetery Road.
Oh, you live over by John and Loses, Leo and Lynn.
Yep, yep.
They used to have different turbines. I'm 220th, so I'm just, uh...
Yeah, you're, you're right around the corner, yeah. So, that's where I'm at. Garland School District, graduated from Gladbrook, been on the acreage for 52 years.
Awesome.
So, well, welcome. Thank you.
I'm Doug DeBorg, farmer between Clutcher and Elbron.
Wade Mitchell Farm, uh, the agenda's here by Buckingham.
Okay.
It's true, it's true.
I should say, I also work for FS Spring and the Fall, so I'm all spray, so I kinda know where everybody is.
I was wondering, where do you haul out of?
Center. Well, it used to be Trera and Gladbrook, but now everything's on the center.
Go Trera and then they got...
Yep, yep, yep. Worked for Gary. Yep.
Okay.
Steve Peterson, I just live nine miles east on 30.
Yep, that's the true state.
By Chelsea, between, on Divining, if you know where the Divining...
Oh, yeah.
Divining Road is.
Foothills will bohemian.
I'm right there. I'm one of the first turnoffs to Divining.
Oh, my in-laws, my in-laws were two chocks.
One of the sexes, I guess.
My mother-in-law was a chichock, so...
Which one?
Well, her mother, so it'd have been Emma. Emma and Henry Conrad.
Emma Chichock?
It was Emma Chichock, yep. She was married Henry Conrad.
That's a, for Emma Chichock. I'm related to her. I had an aunt, Emma Chichock, but she was married to Joe.
Oh, that's a different one, yeah.
Bohemians really.
Not just related to everything.
Hey, Jody?
Yes.
How delivering? What, what is the public opinion? Cause we're fighting about that on Monday mornings. What is your, what are you hearing from farmers? Or nothing, baby?
The ones that put them up, well, the ones that...
Okay.
Don't want them, which is the vast majority, otherwise they'd be putting them on their property. Don't want them. They've got livestock, they've got their kids, they've got, when you talk to the guys that are building these towers, putting them in, there's, you ask them, the point like, would you be willing to move your family up here and live in these tower shadows? And it, I have not yet found one of the construction guys to say yes.
So, the people, is there, isn't there anybody that has put them up that says, "God, I wish I would have done that"? Not yet, huh? Okay.
What do you get? I'm, I'm sure they talk amongst themselves, they probably lost friends, um, probably arguments of families.
So, young Langaboth said this morning, might be your reporter, but yes, you are. Okay, never mind.
Let's stand and say, "I pledge allegiance..." Right behind me.
There she is.
"I pledge allegiance..."
...to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, without indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a motion to approve the agenda. Everybody should have it in front of them, right?
You need a motion, though?
Yeah, motion please. I move with the agenda here. Then move to second and approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, propose. Motion carried. Okay, let's approve our previous minutes from 6:25. Any changes that entertain a motion to approve our previous minutes?
I moved to approve the minutes.
To a second?
Same.
Then move to second and approve our minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, and a motion carried. Open remarks by administrator.
Much today. Um, I did include a copy of the end of the 1998 zoning ordinance that includes conditional use permits. You can reference that for wording on the solar one if you, if you would like to. I did also include a copy of the, uh, current lit ordinance for the same reason, to reference for conditional use permits. Also, we will be reviewing that soon, so you have that to put in your file for upcoming. Um, we will need a public hearing for the ordinance draft, um, before you send your recommendation to the board supervisor. So, heads up on that. Um, normal, uh, notification time, uh, for regular meeting, no, less than 40 is no greater than 20. So, uh, if the same date at the end of July still works for you guys, we could make that. If we get all done, if we're not done, we could do the public hearing whenever you guys want to. Um, and then, as far as, uh, public notices, I did check with the county attorney, and unless they are within the same timeframe of the, no less than four and no greater than 20, um, they each need to have their own public hearing. So, uh, constant doing business for updating the ordinances, so... If you do want to plan ahead, just for your own schedule, we can still do that. Uh, people still just have to wait till the end of the back range. So, those are my comments for today. Uh, I did check the last meeting. You guys started, ended right at the beginning of road use agreements, so if you'd like to start there and then go through the end, then if you wanna go back...
Let's hope we get to the end.
Oh, I'm sure you will. You guys have pretty much...
We're very close.
And then, I'd say after that, if you have anything you wanna go back and touch on, I know a couple of you have some notes, um, we do have the new formatting, so if you have any issues that I screwed up with the formatting, um, any references that we need to clarify, I have a copy to take notes on, so...
Good job on the formatting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ash Dears.
Makes way more sense.
And I did have the table of contents, so you guys, um, will wanna probably review that once you get to the end and go back, but make sure it all makes sense. So, all right, that's me.
That being said, let's start on page 20 at the bottom, section 600, road use agreement. Everybody can find that. What we've been doing, Jody, is just kinda quiet the reading through of ourselves, page by page, and if someone finds something they don't understand, or that they think needs to be discussed or corrected, just speak up, right?
I do have one question.
Mm-hmm.
When this equipment, oversized equipment, comes to the little bridges that have weight limits on it, are they authorized to go across, or do they have to go around?
They should have to go around.
Supposed to go around.
Shouldn't that be stated, or does that just gonna be figured in as DOT regulation that they cannot go across there without?
The engineer also reviews that. It, it can send that into the engineer's office. I believe they would take that into account, but you could clarify, you know, including weight limits.
I mean...
A lot of times, you need to state that several times in these...
Over and over and over.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a bad idea at all.
What did they hear at the beginning here?
I don't, how would, how would you add that? Just, uh, you, you need to, the developer needs to, uh, observe all weight limits, uh, on bridges, roads.
Does Tampa County do a springtime? Weight limit on roads, frost law?
I'm sure they do. We used to fight that all the time.
I mean, it's not posted now, but I mean, it's beyond that now, but that would be something else.
Posted?
Yes, they, they posted.
You couldn't have too heavy a load on.
Yep, so it's a...
And there's ton absolutely.
Frost, frost brings out and just, uh, scaled up.
Or, if you write down B A T, you know it's frosty.
Yeah, yeah.
Carol, um, it should be set up where you like, go to the end of a paragraph and it should read number for you?
Uh, there's no numbers on this.
What?
But, that could be, cause I opened it in a Google Doc, because when it, when it went to open, it opened in a Google Doc.
So, it didn't open your number?
No, but that's okay. I, I, I'm...
Okay?
Yeah, I don't know why.
Well, I'll check whatever comment, we'll send it back to you.
Yeah, no, when it, when I went to open it, it just automatically went to Google Doc this time, so...
So, if we put developers need to observe all weight limits on bridges during construction, that cover it?
Current. You, you wanna make sure it's current, because if, as you say, it's spring, uh, there may be weight limits come in that, that would affect that road. So, I would say, there must be, must... They are required to observe all current...
Weight limit?
Weight limits on bridges and roads.
You want that?
Within Tampa County.
So, that just goes in the very first 601.1?
I would think so.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if you wanna stick it in there. At the end of that little paragraph, or in the middle, or at the beginning?
So, you said developers, is that what, the wording you wanted to use?
I would think they are. I wouldn't, guys, gals?
The 602.1, road use agreement should clearly outline the road's responsibilities regarding the use of county roadways during the construction, uh, as well as repair of any roadways or damage as a result of construction activity. The S F E S must observe all current...
Weight limitations?
Weight limits on roads and...
Okay. Bridges?
And bridges. During the construction phase.
During construction maintenance? I mean, cause construction, you just limited it to construction, should have, so it should be construction?
Make sure it doesn't have any, any big stuff after. I, I...
Well, probably not for solar, maybe not. I don't know.
Solar.
Unless they bring in, unless they get hit with a derecho or something and...
Yeah, I think they, but they're worried about the construction phase more than anything else.
Construction abandonment? When we get there?
So, you want that at the end of that first paragraph? That what we just said? Or do you want that in another section?
I think that'd work at the end of the...
I think that'd work, right, yeah.
Okay. We go back to that. All right. So, say that again, Steve. The S F E S must... Or who wrote it down?
Yeah, S F E S, uh...
Need to observe all current weight limits. Bridges, the engineer observed, yes, all current weight limits and restrictions.
Cause 601 is just the purpose of the road use agreement. Okay.
Uh...
Cause that seems more like an actual...
What about 602?
Would it be better off?
602.1, that's right.
Under roles, responsibilities?
Do you want...
Yeah, I think that's...
You could just add it to 602.1, I think, at the end of that.
Okay, so say that again, Doug. The S F E S must observe all weight limits?
All current.
All current weight limits?
Yes.
Weight limits and restriction on bridges and road within the county.
Cause they might think at the time that they're reading the ordinance, so...
And, certainly is, is, that, sometimes they'll, they'll embark all these roads for only a short period of time.
That way current covers it.
Yeah, I mean, they, until, yeah, then the weather straightens out, the frost goes out, and then it's done.
And where do we put that? At 602.1?
Yes.
602.1.
So, the FS, the S F E S must observe all current weight limits and restrictions on bridges and roads, somebody said, it's a false...
I think that's right.
Okay. Do you want me to highlight what we've put in?
Yes, possibly, just so I can...
Okay.
See, see you here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Let's see, here, 603, it says... Cost estimate. Cost estimate, following the ground show, price of cost estimate supplied by the developer, and it should also be... Has stipulated in section 602.2 of this article.
Do I need to add that?
602. 603.
Where do you see it? Wait.
Well, if, if you look at, and now what they have is, I took this, due to this article, which is here. So, what would we, would you say, it has stipulated in, uh, 602.2? So, we would write is, had this as stipulated in 602.2? Right here.
That's this one up here. What's up with that?
Yeah, right. It's, the following ground show, cost estimate, as supplied by the developer, has stipulated in this ready.
Okay. It's a total, estimate of the total cost of repair, right?
Right.
Yep, is that what you want me to put in?
602.2?
Yep.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, got it.
Steve, that, that financial risk... This is 603.
Okay, we go down to that. So, and then, 60, just 603?
Right, it says...
What if you just put this whole paragraph on 603?
I think we wanna keep it, that we use the, you know, so we got the same things that they do, then there's a reason that we legally broke the things out the way they did. So...
So, then... So, this should just be in 603?
Right, cause it's, it's the whole, it's the whole cost estimate, and this cost estimate...
Okay.
Has, has a bunch of things, and so, we were referring to that.
Yes. 604, 604, financial security. It says, "Any and all costs associated with repair of roadways, other infrastructure damaged as a result of destruction with the, should be paid for entirely by the developer without any assistance from the county, but it gives up time period." Usually, you'd want to say, hey, within 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. That's a good point. They need, they need to have this paid. They, they may say, well, we'll pay it next year, or we'll pay it.
Well, we're just trying to make sure it's right.
Yeah.
You know, I think, you should show it to Doug, if he still has it.
Should be paid for in 60 days, within 60 days, and within 30 days, or...
What do you think, 60?
I'd give him 60.
30 wouldn't be enough to get rain or something in there, if there's no way they can do any road work.
Yeah, yeah.
You say that, that's a 604, financial security, right?
So, within, so within 30 day, or 50 days?
60 days, yeah, I give them time. Cause there can be a lot of work done, and, you know, you don't know.
Hopefully it does.
And maybe a hard worker, able to maybe, you know... Get a contractor in to fix it. Is that 604.2? Is that how long we get changed, huh?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna change.
Well, we had, we had 130% of the total cost, didn't we? Somewhere else in this.
Right.
We're at 130%, here we're three times.
So, we find where the 130 was at.
This one says 300%. Okay. Right here on 604.2, our national security shall cover no less than three times the total cost identified.
Right, that's what we're trying to pick up.
Yeah.
We, we, I know we have it in here somewhere else up.
Oh, I said there's the 130.
Is that decommissioning?
Is it?
Basically, that's what this is gonna cover, if it's decommissioning.
Well, the road use, 300, then the big decommissioning, over 100, that has to be tearing stuff down and, and we've struck out, storing the ground and all that stuff. We're, we're just, I didn't know.
This is more just for the little...
Little groups.
About three times what then? Top street to 28 is our 130.
705.2, yeah, up page 28, 140%. And it leaves us under decommission by the post here.
Yes, I do. I understand weight point two, it's, it's, this is more toward the roads.
No, we had a cost estimate, everything, the roads, that, that, this, this covers, three times.
Three times that tore up, messed up the road repair, possible road repair or not.
That's right. The decommissioning was 130. Now, was, I'm tearing the thing down, moving about, all the reconstructing with the ground back to what it was.
So, what, so what do we put here for the red? And what, red letter is, red word for?
100 document, okay. Well, I think total cost identified, we need to define that a little bit. Total cost of three times wherever the...
602.2, that, that, that was, is basically 603. That is the document location. You look at the Des Moines, you get the one, whatever refers to.
The cost estimate?
Yeah. So, and just put 603 there, is identified in 603.
Okay.
And, we're changing an A to a B, and, and this one here.
Oh, yeah.
We, we got 603.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got that.
Oh, here.
Got the 60... 606.1, and we, we have the A, and then, uh... Let's see, the, the, we don't have the B in order. There should be a B here.
Okay. So, you want that put in? I need to type that in there. Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
No?
Okay, this, 602. This, this should be a B instead of a 602.2.
Oh, okay. So, 60, 606.2 should be a B?
Right.
You're way at 606 already?
And then there's...
The weight is.
Yeah, and then, and the 60...
How do you get ahead of it?
6.1, and just be the 606.
Okay, hang on a minute. So, that's a B. I'm gonna highlight that, so Laura can see, and then if this goes out of whack again, she could use her magic to fix all that. Okay.
Then the 606.1 just becomes a 606.
Okay, so this should just be...
I'm glad you know how to do. I tried doing that one day. Well, and every, oh, I had it word, and it would just shut everything over one.
Yeah, I had it all messed up.
It took about four reams of paper and...
Different fonts, different, yeah, maybe.
Six?
Yeah, like six.
Oh, Laura, again, this, this, oh my, this is fantastic.
I apologize to you. Apologize to you. Why? I'm sorry. It's just, it goes out of whack.
That's okay.
Well, it should, it probably should have opened your Word doc.
I think we leave this.
Can you reopen it?
So, five, it's 606.
I don't know, let me try. Okay, so Wade, instead, you, so that should be just, so this should be 606, this is the, this is the definition, or not definition, but the purpose of construction notification. That's just this. So, that just means...
That is, uh, you know...
So, it says 606, so I don't need to have 606 here?
Right.
Because that's already there.
And then, we, we definitely don't think we combine it, cause they're...
So, we don't need to combine this? That can come out?
And then, that would...
So, that's A, and that's now B. Okay. Okay.
Unlike me when you get that figured out, or you're...
Oh, my word.
What do you do?
It's like a, it's like a map.
That's why I'm doing that, yeah. It's more toward construction notification.
Yeah.
Oh, we do have an A here.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to... Open something else.
I'm gonna see if I can Google Doc. Kind of thought it would work better.
Okay, so Google Docs works great on my Mac, which is my school computer, but I can't use that for this, and so, I don't know, but I don't know what is...
If you're going back and forth, it's easier, but if it's...
Yeah.
We'll make it work. Okay.
No, they'll, they jump up this, picks the voices in or in...
You're just gonna hold me here. Okay. Good mistakes, no...
We can get ahead of you, go.
Okay, so we're now, we're on 60...
Yeah, this is just a technicality, didn't...
So, this, this should be 604?
Right.
Okay.
Is that, again, 604, 604 is... Financial security.
Okay, so just put 604 there. All right. Okay. Okay, now, let's see if I can open this.
607, is that? Yeah. The interdocument, yeah, that's 604.
Copy.
And what, what that is, is, is outlined in, for cost repair and, and, about, and then, 604 is the financial security. What, these things I'm doing are just refining a...
Look at.
Yeah, I'm not changing any of the mains or texts or... 702.
Back to this, right here.
Right. Is the duty commission standard? This one is 702.
Okay, 702. All right. We got a question back here at 603.3, and that down here.
Yep.
Baseline survey, um, and then it says, "Construction asks, F E S, including above or below, should it say, including but not limited to?" Because if any other infrastructure or anything else is damaged, you've just said this, 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 and this, but if something else is damaged that isn't listed, then they're not liable for. So, should it say, "Including but not limited to," or something along that line?
That'd be a bad idea, right before the word above.
Yeah, or, it says, "Including," and then before, "Above, including but not limited to," or not, um, I don't know what else other...
Or just to cover your, the CYA.
CYA type thing, yeah. Cause otherwise...
Cost estimate, that's where you.
Yeah, six oh three point three.
Point three.
Yeah, the second. Second of the last sentence, yes.
Six thousand, I think it, right?
Ah.
After the word including, Steve.
Okay.
But, but not limit to above or below ground, utility lines, drainage tiles, private driveway, that.
Now, have. Each of us. It's everything right now, but.
Yeah.
I mean, you're closing the door on, if something else were to get damaged, that isn't listed right there. You're leaving the door open for, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know, probably.
No, I, I did that.
Yeah. Guess so.
No, and I just opened this, reopened it in a Word doc, so I'm gonna be a bit behind you.
Right.
While I. Okay. Another question on six oh three point five, where you've got the providing liability insurance. Uh, where the cost is, should there be a cost of the bond in that to cover, I mean, it says if the developer's liability insurance coverage lapses for any reason. Should, do they have to post a bond for that insurance, or no?
They have to have the insurance of lose.
But if the insurance lapses, then there's nothing to fall back on, right?
Well, the insurance can't land, that's what they're saying.
That's what it says here. In the event that developers liability insurance covers, that's during a reason. That's why, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
I don't know, that's, that's a question with the lawyer.
Is that something you guys go over from another?
Give me this.
Another ordinance, or is that something that I was?
No, that's something that was pulled over.
Yeah.
It was speaking when you said one oh. Six.
Which is, right, in this.
Okay. All right.
Oh, that's got a section.
What is section D, I'm trying to figure that out right now.
Section D.
We don't have that, right?
Yeah. Set off. The cost estimate. So that's seven oh four. Where are you?
Oh.
Where was that?
Top of page forty six.
Yes.
That's section seven oh four, so.
That, uh.
It's coming, so down there.
For instance.
Yeah, where, where.
Number, I can go back to this version and find that number.
It was on seven oh three.
Finally you caught up. The problem was, there were two things, I could open it or download it, and I needed to download it first. That's what I didn't do.
That's when you're looking at section six five. Just start to look at it. There's every part.
Hey.
I thought we had these.
Here we have. Okay.
Not another.
Okay, so seven oh three point six should be seven oh four, that's in section D.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, one one three wave. What is this?
Seven oh three point six.
Okay. That one's there.
Does that make sense?
Okay. I think we got. C five, is this a C five? And this is section D, which is?
Cost estimate.
Right, which is seven oh four. That's, that's the seven oh four, and this is C five.
Six oh six, that's just gonna need, like, it's like trying to outline itself, so put it in. So you need to pull back.
Six.
Nope, no, I have so much.
I think that's.
You have, don't go back, I don't.
No. It's, it is wide, but like the whole range.
Oh, it's ridiculous, yeah.
Can't be endless, but wait.
Two.
Okay.
Four. All right, section C of.
Section D of this article, okay.
You guys seem like you know about five and five and five.
Or if it's five, section.
Yes, I.
Does that make sense? I mean, felt like they're.
Right.
Yeah. Uh. Okay.
I'll take it back to. I go to get back to the road construction. Section C, the cost estimate.
Okay.
Down to the road construction. Which mirrors.
Wait, and even if starting five plus now.
Building strip. Must estimate.
Which?
Uh, section C. Is our six oh three? Consider, or what, section three, and as. Would you say that our? Our section C.
Section C.
Which is? Is this every book?
Six oh three. Cost estimate.
Page is that one?
This is on page twenty one.
Twenty one.
All supplied by the device. Stop. What is?
This is on. Over the. Decommissioning. It's just on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, would, would, would you just say that with our six oh?
Got it. Six oh one. Oh, you should know what I took.
Uh huh.
This cost.
Hang on, I got one more thing here. Wade, Wade just gave you a hell of a trick. So.
Engineer, so that's.
I want to make sure.
Our six oh three.
Okay, so this one should be seven oh two.
Six oh three.
Okay, no, no, it's, it's a different.
That's maybe, bother me.
This is.
We buy a road.
Six oh three. So we gotta go back to the word on lease for. All number of, of costs supplied by the developers, developers, the cost shall be repaired by.
Fine, okay.
So what was we're wondering, or this? If you get a number one professional, and could be, in a baseline three, right? In a baseline, in a present condition of any infrastructure or any damage. But six oh three, all, all, six oh one, six oh, six oh three, one, two, three.
You doing okay now?
Okay.
Thank you.
No, no, I stayed up last night going through section C, article five.
Remind me.
It was the past.
A week is not enough time to get.
Which is hundred.
No, it was.
That's just six oh three.
I printed, first of all, I had a, a printer that ran out of ink, and I went, I couldn't find any ink. H P printer.
That's, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So I went and got a panel printer, and I got it all.
I see you, Wade.
I was. Deleting the H P printer on my computer.
There's seven oh?
Well, well, you know, this ink is available.
Point three.
H P still, I'm gonna go.
It's W R N five.
Go to the H P. Online and they don't, they have stores.
What is it?
Well.
Six oh three.
Yeah.
Section, six oh three.
So now I have two printers. Well, I don't have any, yeah, yeah.
One, but that should cover it, that's, that's the, by the way, since it's just, they do what you want.
In.
Mission A.
Well, yeah.
Just what makes sense.
Like a big roadmap.
Mm-hmm.
But I think I've finally caught up with you guys.
Wade.
Okay with Wade. I've got Wade, nothing, we're just talking about you, Wade.
There's a lot, uh, earlier too.
Okay, so now that I've got of where we at, and what are we looking at now?
Where are we, guys, we at seven oh five yet?
That's where I'm at.
And it's for security.
Okay. Where you put this sixty days in on the repair of infrastructure? Whatever, should that state upon completion of whatever the construction? The developer will have sixty days to make sure all roadways, everything is.
Which one are you on?
Uh, six oh four.
Page twenty two.
Yeah, page twenty two. Just right in that. You were gonna put, you know, a sixty, they should have to do all this within sixty days, but. Should that be sixty days upon completion of construction? I mean, it, sixty days from when?
Yeah.
Sixty days from the completion of repairs.
Or, yeah, whatever, whenever they done.
Sixty days.
Um.
Six oh four.
Six oh four. Um, completion, oops, um.
Should be page four sixty days.
Of repairs.
On construction or repairs? Repairs entirely by the developer, assistance from the county.
Okay, so.
Eight, six, yeah.
So. Entirely by a developer, sixty days for completion of repairs without any assistance from the county?
Yeah. Entirely by the developer without the assistance from the county. I think you just stick it right in that, it's, it's there on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're reading seven oh five point one.
Yeah.
The landlord shall review the financial security provided by the developer in assignment agreement to be responsible for any expenses which the financial security fails to cover. The agreement shall be secured by the land on which the S E, S F resides. Does there need to be a lien placed by the county?
Well, yeah, that'd be, I think so.
Wouldn't that happen?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's right, yeah, several five point A, or seven oh five point one A. This agreement should be recorded and in effect until decommission is complete, would that amount to a lien on the property?
Oh, yeah.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, I just don't make sure.
Well, we've seen here that it will be recorded, and, uh. This, uh, we, this lien should be recorded and in effect.
Do we need to say lien?
I think so.
Lien instead of agreement?
Yes. Yeah.
On, on both of the places, or, or on all the places?
There's, you mean, that, no, the second one, we did it, this, this, this lien shall be recorded and in effect until decommission is complete.
So just that one?
Yeah, I think that's.
If you go up to seven oh five. Any and all associated with the decommissioning of an S F should be paid for and tied by the owner and or operator without any assistance from the county or non-participating landowner in this project area.
System of the county or non.
Participating.
Non-participating land. Okay, so. All right, it's, so right now it says individual landowners, do, is that, are we putting in non-participating in addition to that? Or is this where it should be on participating and not just landowners? It's in there, so I'm kinda confused.
Pick out individual and put in participating.
Okay.
That really. To me, the money in escrow put form of, to be deemed accessible by the board, and you could, you could go on a whim, and the board could. You know, to me. Money ought to be.
In somebody with the word, though. The, the board accepts it, and they're, you know. It's their responsibility to protect the rights of the county.
Back on, I'm going ahead to the top page twenty eight, we started outlining section D of this article. We gotta change that down, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Seven oh five two and seven oh five three both mentioned section D of this article.
Section D.
Section D was seven oh four.
Four.
That's what, that's what Wade told me.
Yes, that's right.
Seven oh four.
Section seven oh four. Simple as that, isn't it?
So again, then later on, it also says outline section D, so that should just put seven oh four there again, right?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, seven oh five point four A, financial security has not been reviewed in any due time. The previous bond file. Where we know, let's, I can't knock crazy about bond. Uh, that's assuming that the previous. Changed the word to financial security to. Whatever it is. What do you want? This, this, this just says bond, like it's automatically a bond.
Oh, right after that?
Who said, hey, oh, okay.
Yeah. That's really pushing to have money in escrow. But if you, like, as you said, it could be whatever they do, but just to say bond, that.
It's a bomb, but it really isn't necessarily. Previous financial instruments.
Right.
Can we put, can we say financial instruments? Financial security, that, that's a financial security.
Okay, where's this at? Seven oh?
Five point four under A.
Point four, seven five point four A.
It says it's previous.
Bond.
It says previous, it should be financial security instead of bond, right?
So.
Right.
Ninety days prior to ever said previous financial. Security filing or renewal?
Really filing or renewal there?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
By like.
Okay, bond showed up some place else.
File with the counties, the county knows.
So, okay, so bond also is in seven oh five point four. Do you want me to go ahead and change that to financial security again?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Avoid the line bond.
Yeah. You got this bond and then they decide they just close up and walk away, don't pay the bond.
They can't. I think, yeah, it's really hard to get a bond and they've gotta, they've gotta put up financial security to cover that bond.
Okay.
But they don't wanna have cash and land out there all the time, that's what.
Yeah.
I can understand their reasoning.
Oh, yeah.
We're going section E, alright? I'm looking at it.
Anything that has an article or a section that you really wanna make sure it has an actual corresponding number.
We're looking at page twenty nine, seven oh seven point three.
Yeah, I just don't know what it's referencing.
So we're trying to figure.
Article one. Article one, section U, we don't have. That is.
This.
That I gave you before, that's article one, section E.
Oh, yeah, okay. Then we can second that.
Financial security and all that.
Right, as open, I think we're gonna get these, these are the financial security. You had that paper, right?
Yes.
Now, these things, you kinda need to put in there. Enforcement of penalties. And that, that is the article one, section E.
Yeah, you're saying enforcement and penalties.
Is it, yeah, well, article one, section E, that, that that referred to were. Seven oh three point.
Four, seven three.
Right, that's referring to this. Which we don't have.
Have in there.
No. And if we go, we go clear up to the front of ours and put that in somewhere. But these, these are a couple of things that I. Do you see those in our, in our? Ordinance anywhere, the financial security and enforcement of penalties?
No, I think I put a note that we needed to add that. Um, just either add it to section eight hundred or add another section. Um, for violations or.
But this is.
That's actually.
Eight hundred. Cause he had under seven hundred, that's decommissioning and these would, you know.
So eight hundred is related rules and regulations.
Right, oh, that'd be good.
We could add it before that, we could move, either combine it with eight hundred. Or move what's in eight hundred down if you last and then. Add violation of penalties, a new section on its own.
Enforcement, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and then this would.
And then this is the best place to.
And then this would refer to that.
Yeah. Okay. Where's my?
Yeah.
I heard maybe here or another little section?
Yeah, it's, it's sound like. We have a nine hundred and then we put these in.
So would this be nine, a nine hundred section or this would be?
Nine hundred.
Food, okay.
Hundred. Nine hundred, then we have nine hundred one and nine hundred two.
Let me, okay, so. Section nine hundred and we're calling this what? Penalties? Enforcement and penalties or? Or what I call this? And then this would be just a section under it?
There's some financial risk and responsibility already in there buried under all those different.
We couldn't just go to F.
Been there.
Or enforcement and penalties.
It's already. Isn't listed. There's multiple times it's stated. The financial risk and responsibility is upon the developer. Owner, whatever.
Think we're just talking about penalties right now. Are we violations?
Enforcement and penalties.
The problem was. We have to figure out where we're directing or not directing seven oh seven point three where it says article one, section E. This was article one, section E, so that doesn't need to be here, we just need to end that. And then we'll get enforcement and penalties.
Would you wanna, yeah.
Just end that.
End of that.
So. Okay, um, in the absence of any intent or reinstated operations. Failure to begin the dismembering removal and event F F B S within ninety consecutive days shall constitute a violation of this ordinance. Subject to penalties as, subject to penalties. But then, okay, so enforcement penalties would be the next section nine hundred? It's something that up to.
Yeah.
Hundred. So just leave it down. Okay. So this would be, so we want enforcement and penalties to be section eight hundred. And then everything eight hundred become nine hundred?
Yeah, that would be better because nine, eight hundred is kinda, it's a nice way to summarize, summarize the end of it.
Okay, so then ordinance, subject to penalties as specified in section.
Hundred.
At section eight hundred, okay, section.
Eight hundred becomes. Violation nine, nine oh one now.
Okay, hitting that here.
We have. An eight hundred on this, on that page, we goes. Financial risk, enforcement penalty, serviceability.
Okay, so section.
Sirability, that was, that, that we already have. This, I mean, we already have that in there. Two. These two things that I go.
Okay, so then all of these. And then.
Why, why could these just be? Two, three, four, just eight, eight oh five, eight oh six.
I like that.
Okay, so now section nine hundred is gonna be related, those regulations, section eight hundred will be.
What do you guys say in all of yours, chief? Violations?
Yeah.
When it goes back to the I O code.
The, these, these. We've already got. This in here and that, that's pretty much, that's still about the same. Now, these two. If we, if we just. Why don't we wanna just make them eight oh five and eight oh six?
These two?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't. If you don't put the wrath of Carol on you. Cause I think I told her something different.
That's okay, it's okay. I'm not hard on. Alright, so what do we wanna do with these two?
These, these two, if we just make them eight oh five and eight oh six.
I can do that. I will just.
Because this is.
Let me do this.
See, this one we already have. In, right here.
Okay. See, I can just do.
We gotta change the wording.
Goes back.
Gotta change the wording a little bit to talk about Des Moines County, alright?
Right, okay, so. This would be eight oh five. And I'll change that to Tama County, right? That's what you want? And then this will be eight oh six. And then. This should be eight oh six one and eight oh six two?
Right.
Okay.
And we gotta change. One county again.
And then, then back there where references.
Super county listed again.
I did.
We referenced. Seven oh seven point three. Now it becomes eight oh five. Bottom page twenty nine, bottom page twenty nine.
Oh, what does it become? Seven oh three, part three becomes eight oh five?
Yeah, that's what we're putting.
Four three.
Three.
To start off penalties.
Article one, section E. Yeah, yeah, there you go. Eight oh five.
That sort of curve?
No.
Oh, yeah.
What do you have?
Can't give me anymore until I finish this.
It's article.
Hmm?
We got this in random, eighth and two, it's outlined in section E of this article.
Well, that's number one, section.
Oh.
This article is. Also a civil and not current.
You know, so aside through sure you know. Is outlined in. Has outlined in. Basically, we're defining about. Termination of abandonment. Seven seven point one. This one founds melting as required for the initiative. Using the funds set aside to assure bond or other. As an outline, okay, that. That took me back to the surety bond.
So section E is financial.
When we got listed on here. Seven oh five two, financial security. Outlined in.
Section, if you do this one, where it said financial security. Which would be.
Might understand.
Fine, when I guess there's anything about it, is it?
Yeah.
This says, it just says.
Yeah.
I'm reading the.
So Chad, there was a code. The I O code.
Uh, eight oh five, eight oh five.
It doesn't say anything about imprisonment, so it's just the money, the dollar. So I don't know.
I've got one more paragraph to put in. Cool, you gents.
Okay.
Got a whole herd of kids.
I can take, take twenty second granted over you three right now.
I'm just reading on this financial just or the enforcement.
I think we reached that point, yeah. Thanks for three seconds.
Doesn't say. Just the dollar amounts.
The dollar amounts are accurate.
Yeah, dollar amounts are accurate. But it says nothing enforcement. About imprisonment. Business. And it doesn't hold, it's gotta be a civil offense. Not felony misdemeanor, serious misdemeanor. It can't be any of those.
And the.
It's strictly civil procedure.
Yeah, they gotta go off work and they have eagles, they have.
Or it's the archery and they have. And all kinds of jail, that's always key.
He's had dollars, right?
Yeah.
Bless you.
Bless you. Yeah, flying air like this. Got better. Affairs on there.
Just says.
If.
Whoever.
Air like this, the, the Irish airline.
Judgeman is under, yes, they have to pay court costs and fees, apparently, because we have to pay. But there's nothing there, so anything. Seeking a civil penalty is all the allegations.
Don't, don't, don't. They said you gotta make your own, you're gonna fly up there. Flight return, so get a car.
Doesn't say anything about. So that's gotta be.
You get tired, I can't imagine. Every year.
If we're gonna go with this.
Proces to get the.
When you.
Especially your.
Especially for somebody.
Right. I think the prison, imprisonment warrant should be filed.
Don't think of the back.
Oops. And you get me downed fouled. And forget that this way and then all if you pull up to one, it's going the other way.
On this enforcement and penalties, I pulled up the chapter three thirty one. Point three oh seven of the I O code. And the dollar amounts are right as far as fines. But there is no mention of anything imprisonment at all. Cause it's strictly a civil. It's a civil fine, so I think we need to strike that imprisonment thing out of there.
Chicken, that's eight oh five, that's.
According, we're sticking with you on what the I O code says.
Yes, please stick with the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That causes so many, I should, don't you know.
Oh.
Well, that could've been years ago too.
Well, it will be, that's pushing, cutting them on, it's here.
They, they weren't on there before, so we. Right, seven oh seven three. So.
We're gonna.
At least match it to something in the first round, yeah. That's why you just review it every so many years.
That would be a new thing.
Well, when, it says, it says article one, section E though here.
Yeah.
If this. It says article one, section E.
It should be eight oh five, I think, what we thought.
Okay.
It is, yeah, you're right.
But my question.
It is, it should be article one, section.
Yeah, six.
Yeah.
Cause that's the penalties.
Mm-hmm.
So on the bottom of page twenty nine, polish seven oh seven point three.
Yeah, it should be safe.
Best finding one, section eight oh six.
They have, they have.
Jail time.
They had it wrong in the white one?
Yeah.
That must be eight oh six.
Yeah.
And some of our other warnings is it miss, it mentions infractions being a simple misdemeanor, which would be criminal. Which may also. We're talking about the civil infractions, so it sounds like all the wordiness can be considered a simple misdemeanor to. Violate it, it'll ask the not criminal versus civil penalty, so yeah, we have to make sure the words like they was, for sure.
Right. I mean, if we're gonna go by that, we need to have their. State to say it.
So we need to take that imprisonment out?
I check it out. I did not.
Hang on, girl, you're ahead of me and I got something to go back to there.
Okay, I think, okay, so we're not putting in severability, that didn't, we didn't need that part.
It's already in there.
Okay, so then I've got, I've got this in now, what was next that you wanted to throw at me? Bring it up.
Seven oh seven point three, where we said subject penalty specifying in section eight oh.
Okay, seven oh seven point three.
Page twenty nine.
Okay. We're changing that to.
Six. Eight oh five, isn't it?
Wait, I just said eight hundred, eight oh six, okay.
Cause eight oh six is our enforcement.
If you wanna make it more right, be section eight hundred instead of something specific, that could work. Especially when we're changing, but if you wanna be specific, eight oh six, already have it, that's fine.
Oh. Yeah, what does that become?
Five, I think.
Where are we at now?
Right underneath that. Seven oh seven point four.
So section eight. That should be what? Seven oh five.
Seven oh five.
Okay.
At least something I wanna change, yes.
I'm just gonna highlight this whole thing more because it went out of whack, so. I'll put your whole thing in fix. Fix formatting. Add it in. There you go.
Hello, we're down to signatures, aren't we?
Well, thank you for putting in everybody's name, I didn't know everybody's name. You guys made it to the end.
I think we did.
I know Steve said he had something earlier to go back to, I'm sure Wade does.
Oh, you did have some other stuff in here too, that was.
You remember what it is, guys?
Well, at the beginning, she's got a bunch of stuff. She has stuff in table contents and below that, so.
I think section one hundred, second one, I just redlined what I had changed, make sure you guys are okay with my wording change. And if it's in parentheses, it's like a suggested, please take a look at it.
We say this a couple of places, this is two hundred point nine decommissioning. And I just put it on here, it's following ceasing of operations. Either through abandonment or planned termination at the end of its life. Returning the land to its original condition.
Okay, where are we at?
Adding, so the two hundred point nine decommissioning.
Okay.
I know we say that other places in here, but I like to.
I started right from the beginning. Okay, so say, where do you want that, say it again?
Okay, uh, either through abandonment or planned termination at the end of its useful life. Returning the land to its original condition.
That be a new sentence or a comma? New feature. Uh, let's see, it's a really long sentence. At the end of its useful life, probably a comma. Alright. Okay. And then take a look at two hundred point two, oh, I got this. So under one hundred point one. She has, uh, in red, combined total and utility scale. I assume we didn't say combined total? No, you did not. Okay. So are you okay with that? Are we okay with that?
Speak that again now.
On one hundred point one, we just must've had just a total limit, um, she has, she fixed it to a combined total. Cuz you were talking about having, you could have multiple, as long as the combined total was at five hundred, right? And then I think you just said, um. Utility solar instead of utility scale, I was just trying to get that all. Okay, so we're gonna cha, we'll change that combined total and utility scale. And for the whole section. I wasn't sure if you wanted to keep the title of utility scale solar energy systems, or if you want to add purpose and intent or something like that. Just if you look at your table of contents, if you like how it reads for that, if you know what it would be, or if you want to. Revise it, um, because all the table of contents catches what your section. Is under.
Purpose and intent makes sense, it's kind of a. Heads up to what's in that first section.
Okay.
I like it.
So we can keep what's there, but add purpose and intent?
Or do you wanna? Take out utility scale solar energy system?
Or just put that at the beginning, so no. I mean, if you have the title, the base of what the. Said you, you wanna just put purpose and intent? Okay. So my next question after that, uh, two hundred point three. We have a definition for battery energy storage systems, the best. The only places it's mentioned elsewhere in your ordinance is. In a group, I'm pretty sure you pulled this from, cuz it's in a grouping, always saying solar array comma best or substation. And it's always that phrasing. But you don't actually have the battery energy storage system listed anywhere else in your ordinance. And I really feel that'd probably be a whole separate ordinance on its own, unless you're doing all of your energy together. So I didn't know if you wanted to just totally remove that definition and then remove all reference to it. Or if you want to add in a section on battery energy storage systems, cuz you either need to add the whole section. Or delete the reference that you're not referencing. That make sense?
That's where all your chemicals come in with the batteries. That's where your soil and.
I feel like that would, could be a whole separate ordinance that you would deal with after you fix the other two that we have.
Think if we do that, we need to address. Our ordinance that. At these. We are putting those in it, cuz if they're not. They're not in an ordinance. If they're not covered, they need to be excluded. Yeah, then we need to.
Then you would wanna add in a section somewhere in your ordinance that says battery energy storage systems are not included in this order.
Right.
But you don't currently have that, and you're referencing it in at least three different places in the ordinance, so.
Do any of the places have batteries? Batteries and energies? Seem like down there. Where we went. Along the Iowa River, yeah, the, the next one they're putting in there on gangbusters for batteries.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. How many makers are there? I know one other thing they're really, no problem is the batteries. I, I agree though, that, that's where all the chemicals, that's where all the bad, the. You're gonna have problems, it's gonna be from those damn batteries, so. So I don't know, it's up to your group, I guess, if you wanna dress separately or just say. Well, you wouldn't need it unless you've got the wind towers, or, well, there again. Do you want a separate ordinance, that way we cover the wind towers or stand soil? I think, I think we need to address because it is. It's common. They, they, those are. Uh, and where, where these. Big computer things are, you know, they're, they're. The batteries. So it is something about, we'll, we'll wanna be addressed. But in, in our orders. And we need to put something in it that they're not.
Allowed.
Yeah, they're not allowed. I, I would say, yeah, not allowed at this time, not, I mean, we're gonna have to, I don't know anything about batteries. I don't know what to. They need to be spaced out, they need to have. Cuz I'm catching, they get wet, they'll, they'll burn. You know, those testicles got underwater and they. Burning like daisy. So you need to put a sub thing in here that. Until, I don't know, another ordinance, I don't, how are you gonna say it? Something to the extent that. Um, the solar energy systems are, are to be used strictly for. Adding power to the grid and not for storage in Tama County?
I like that.
Okay.
Well, electric chemical device. Well, I mean, however you wanna put it technically, but should. That's where you need the attorney to, yeah. I would just say, I. They're not allowed at this time. Cuz I, we. Utility scale. Energy energy systems are not. Solar arrays should be used strictly for transferring. Power to the electrical grid and not to be stored on site within Tama County. I don't know how else you could. Put it.
Do you remember all that?
Basically.
I just didn't know where to put it.
That's, that's. So now we have to put exclusions somewhere.
We don't wanna have any better.
I just take it out.
Just take it out?
But that opens the door that they can put it in, put it in. You specifically have to say that they're not allowed.
Leave the definition in and then just say they're not allowed in Tama County.
And then all the other references, they're out. Okay, so just in the definitions with that, that they're not allowed. That we're saying? But then Carol, you'll wanna do a. Find all other references, the best. You don't like that? Alright, so. So at the end of that definition, just say, uh. This.
But you're gonna have to say electric chemical device enables the energy from solar. Energy system, maybe store them same, you're gonna have to take that out. U-utility scale, because there are. Yeah, homeowners and stuff like that, you know. Utility scale. So it has to be on a commercial level? Large scale BS, BPSS are not allowed.
Okay, oops.
It's in there, I mean, your electro, I mean, energy from a solar farm energy system. To be stored on site. I mean, you can add to it, should it. These. These. Devices will not, are not permitted in Tama County or on a commercial level, um, and. Or at a SFES. I don't know how to say it. Well, that's where we need the attorney, but I, I would say, you know.
For now, just say these devices are not allowed in Tama County?
At this time. Maybe at this time. At the writing of this ordinance. Yeah, at this time, there, the, the BES will not be allowed and on, on the use of a. Commercial solar array in Tama County.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Not in the future, right?
Okay, so leave the definition in, but at the end of it, at this time. The best will not be allowed on a commercial solar array within Tama County.
How about at the writing of this ordinance, instead of at this time? That way it gives a definite, when it's dated at the writing of this ordinance. Yeah, but it. Does that minimize? That go to the future, I mean, this, you know. Cuts it there.
Okay, well, we'll just leave it at this time.
What about if you don't put any time reference into it at all, and just put? You almost have to have a timeline or it won't be legal. That's where you have to lawyer. Look at.
Battery, battery energy storage systems are not defined in this ordinance.
Yeah, if they're not defined, that would be.
I mean, it kind of.
That leaves it wide open.
If you leave it out, it kind of is covered under. Our other ordinance says you can't build anything on ag land without a conditioning permit. So it would still go through the conditioning use process, would still go through the board adjustment. But it wouldn't have any of your regulations or.
But would this be implied when they get their, their permit to put the solar system in? Is the battery storage an implied addition? Upon putting one in?
Could be, so yeah, you might wanna say. They're not allowed for this, with this project, and then battery energy storage systems could be a separate. Entity and try to get in that way, uh, unless those supervisors put in a. Oratory of why you register even other works, they're keeping you busy.
Well, you're gonna have to. Didn't they put anything in it without? You, you could say the SFES is allowed. But without an additional permit. For the. Battery energy storage system, it requires a separate permit. I mean, that it, it's not implied just because you're gonna put in. If that implies that we'll be able to give a permit for that. And, you know, we don't, we don't want, I guess, what I would say. So that doesn't.
You could say they're not allowed for utility scale storage units.
At this time.
Leave the definition in there and then just say we're not gonna allow.
Not, not allowed this time, I mean, that may, that may change.
Right.
You know.
Well, when you get to community solar, you might need someone with that, so you could just say for utility scale, it's. At this time. Okay, so at the sign, the best will not be allowed on a commercial solar array within Tama County. Okay. And then.
We got more to go after that?
Oh, so then I need to go back through and.
Check it out.
Take that out, okay, you guys look ahead, I'm gonna go and. I do remember it was.
The Laura haven't highlighted?
No.
So on two hundred point two one, we talk about personal solar energy. Well, if a personal solar system covers less than ten acres, that will take a lot of batteries that they're gonna store. There's gotta be a limit, I mean, if you're gonna allow it for personal, it's gotta be, put a limitation on the size. But a lot of these, they have, they have on their roof, and then they have. So they don't, I mean, it's not that. So, but what about, I mean, like Gingers up there, North of Glasper, they've got a big solar array for their home setup. And I don't know if they have batteries or not, but. There, it's per, you know, it's not a. Commercial, it's for their own private use.
So I do stipulate size for this at the beginning, how much is considered utility scale, so you could. Put in here, utility scaled arrays. Are not allowed to have batteries.
Well, that's what you've got here, your personal energy, solar energy system is less than ten acres.
Okay, so talking about best, if you go to five oh three point three. Yeah, um, it's mentioned three times. So it says a description of the proposed solar arrays in any best or substation in terms of functional. Design characteristics, appearance, dimensions, et cetera, this is from a report from a licensed structural engineer containing the following information. So should I just take, should I just leave in a description of the proposed solar arrays and take out where it says?
Best.
Best.
Leave substation.
I mean, if you, you put the part in the definition, our best is not allowed in county, that might cover you for here, and then you are quoting a reporter, right?
Take it out of both.
Okay, hang on.
B is under there.
Yep, so. So now it'll say a description of the proposed solar arrays in any substation, good?
Substation in there?
Solar arrays or substation.
I believe they would need a substation.
Yeah, they're still gonna need a substation.
Okay.
Or substation.
And then, so yeah, the rest of that whole section, the. Okay, so then. The next one says photographs in our elevation drive providing visual description of the proposed solar arrays and any best or substation. Yeah.
Where's the third place?
Just, yeah, just on down.
Oh, D, yeah.
On the next page. Okay, let me. Okay, um. Documentation to establish that the proposed solar arrays. And. And any substation, so just take out best, and that we should be fine, right? While we're in the section, if you jumped on the F, there'd be a quick thing to look at, um, you guys had. The applicant developer owner, I thought you could probably take out a developer or owner and just have the Africa. The applicant shall provide the manufacturer specs, recommendation installation, um. Cuz having three different, I mean, the applicant can get that information from the developer to provide for the application.
Getting a little redundant, you're saying here? I used a big word there, do I get an extra credit point for that?
It seems a little extra wordy, then you don't have it.
Yeah, just leave the. Yeah, just leave the, but not the care.
Simple enough.
Yeah, yes.
Is that seem like what you're going for?
Well, back on page fourteen, what do we got here under the red section?
Okay, so before we do that, we should go back to the beginning, cause she still has other stuff at the beginning.
Go back to best.
Yeah, well, not even best, I think we've, I think.
But that's where that's off.
Yeah, but I think it's page six is where, yeah.
Um, yeah, two hundred point two four. Your definition is like a paragraph bound up. So I didn't know if the whole bolden section, if you wanna move that to section three, we already talked about the act of this, and then the basic definition of solar access events upfront. You don't have to, I'm just, I, I'm saying that we. You've got a lot of information in your definitions that's more. Ordinance than definition. I think is what I was going for.
Or it's referring to Iowa code, is that what you're?
No. Not the quoted part at the beginning, but the part that I have in bold, it says this easement shall express the limits of height and location for development of this.
Oh, yeah, that's not really definition.
And then it follows with this easement shall be approved by order of the regulatory board and the board installation instruction. So yes, you're referencing the code, but that's really ordinance and not definition.
Right.
But I mean.
And you think three hundred is the best place to put it, or?
I think section three hundred will work under. Well, part of it, for the part about the solar access regulatory board, the large, the little, um.
Or do they part?
Well. Maybe between three hundred point. Three and three hundred point four somewhere in there, three hundred point two.
Now, because your easement comes in at three hundred point three. So if you put it in.
Right before that, you mean?
Maybe three hundred point three point eight, maybe?
Well, I mean, we can knock everything down. Or have a, another subsection paragraph. Indented either way.
There's a. Those easements are bringing them.
I think it should come before.
Come with three hundred point two?
I think it should be between three hundred point two and three hundred point three to move, so you can.
Just put it eight, put it worth an eight?
Well, I think like she said, it could just be.
Honestly.
Three hundred point three, and then everything just gets changed. Yeah.
So we end up with very little points.
So I feel like it's enough separate information that you wouldn't want.
That is a lot of information.
Point of it's a.
What do you think, guys?
I think it's okay for sound.
Yeah, but it's not really definition.
I know, I know, I understand that, but still, just referring to the Iowa code and that's, and, and I guess.
So if you were somewhere in the middle there, and you're like, remind me again what a solar access easement is, and then you go to definition, and then you're reading four full sentences that are talking more about ordinance than what the easement access is, think about it that way. You're, you're flipping through, um, making sure that the definition mark at the index of your book. Are you going to the definition to find the ordinance information, or you going there to find?
It's defining solar farm, it's, you know, uh, so aren't defined by a decision of the solar access regulatory board, Iowa code. I mean, I, I don't know, it's a definition too.
Stuff to you guys, I just brought it up for consideration, so.
Well, that, that could go either way.
I'll vote with Steve, leave words. Simpler that way.
Yeah.
You wanna make sure all the information from that definition is expressed in a section of your ordinance, and I did not verify that. When I was.
That because right now it's just a definition.
What was your question?
Is all that information included in an actual ordinance section of your ordinance, and not just the definition? Cause you could leave it there, but if it's not somewhere else, it needs to be duplicated somewhere else.
It is under that three hundred point two, it is listed as an Iowa code section. Yeah, I just saw if anybody wanted to look up.
I had concur with that.
I mean, it's there.
Then kind of the same thing on two hundred point two nine, the bold part. Is that duplicated somewhere else, or is it only in the definition, and that seemed like a lot of extra information in the definition section that seemed more like that?
That's in that same section, three hundred point two.
Okay, so then we'll just leave that. Oh, I did. Um. The.
So others, how do you say?
Thirty.
Yeah.
Um. For the bold part, I know it was multiple definitions and other terms are defined. Do we wanna reword solar farm and then move solar access to some definition? Cause we're currently under solar farm. Solar farm means a commercial facility that converts sunlight to electricity, whether by photovoltaic, voltex, or other conversion technology for the primary purpose of wholesale or retail sales of generated electricity.
Refer to that with code again.
And then it also says it's a principal land, it's for the parcel and where it's located, but then goes on as the solar access means an unobstructed access, so that feels like it could be a whole separate.
Definition.
Definition, the solar access.
But do we refer to that anywhere else?
Hmm, no. There's a solar access easement, but no solar access. They got those all alphabetized.
Yeah, they just have the solar access easement, but not the.
Sure.
Solar access.
I don't know if we just forgot a return in there on the first article in base.
So you think maybe where it starts to say solar access, put that in a definition back?
In its own definition.
After citing permit, before solar access easement?
Thanks, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So.
Yeah.
Um, Laura, I'm not going to move it because when I just made a paragraph, it made a new.
And then I'll, I'll.
You could.
I'll.
You can put alphabetized and.
All right, so is it? Two hundred four, yeah, so it makes up. That works, and I will. So then, as, as long as you're updated with this first part of the bold, it says a solar farm defined by the regulatory board under the Iowa code is the principal land use for the parcel in which it's located. I mean, that's multiple definitions for the same phrase of solar farm. So if you want both definitions, you wanna reword it into a single sentence. I feel like the first definition you guys might have gotten from another ordinance, and then the second one is the one that's. Copying out a code.
Just take out the first definition, you think? It's not in highlight? Not in bold, correct?
The first definition is useful, but I just.
I think they.
I feel like you have multiple, and it doesn't involve.
What if you just ended it at the solar farm defined by, which is located, period? And then take the next solar access and put that in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So do you see what I'm saying? The word's got two definitions, the solar farm.
Hmm. One breaks it down by code, and one is just verbiage.
Would they both or? In both?
Okay, alright, um, and then two hundred point three five, you guys, that was, I added the substation, we did not have a definition for.
You got that best in there.
Taken out of this.
Best.
That's fine. I just copied back, cause that's where it was mentioned in everything else, um, so then also, I don't know if you want to. You don't have another section that talks about substations in your ordinance, though. Uh, one thing that came up with, uh. The recent wind issue is that they had a smaller subdivision, subdivision provision, but they didn't include the parcel on the application to get approved. So then they were getting their building permit without having the conditional use process there for that parcel. So I don't know if you want to specify that the substation parcel does need to be included in any conditional use permit. I mean, you'd think that was implied, but it was not. Followed in a recent case in our family, so. So we may, I don't know how specific you think we need to be for people that are not reading through this. Cause while it is needed for the project, it is also needed to be part of the review and notification process that you get the conditional use permits, right?
Literally just part of the project, you'd think it would be part of the project.
Right, but it.
But, but it said, oh, but it, this is a substation owned by the developer, or is it owned by a lion energy or whoever? Whoever.
Is there? For the project, if it was piggybacking on I T C, that would be different.
Hmm.
Um.
I don't know.
I mean, you could go both ways, you could say if you're connecting with an existing substation. You do not need a new permit, but if you're building a new substation, all permitting rules and. Permits were applied. For notifications and. Uh, board reviews.
Do we refer to substation in this ordinance?
In all the places where we referred to best, we referred to substation, well, that's it. I don't think it was anywhere else, I think I did a, a search for it. But I believe the specification more than the best associated, they would need it for their project, I believe, whether they're building anyone or.
You're gonna have to have one.
Or merge, or, or using some of the existing one, they're gonna need them, so. He, he might want to consider at least somewhere, at least somewhere. To regulate that or include it in the permitting process. Something to consider, um. Let's see. I don't think I got much further than that from my little record. Oh, there's a few. Um, page twelve?
We haven't decided what to do with substation yet, have we?
No, I thought you guys might be thinking motherfucking.
They have short intentions, bad, better cover, better do it.
I don't know what you guys.
Second graders, right?
Definition just says the transformer, the raise voltage, lower voltage, and that's. Doesn't really describe. What I know is a substation from, I've managed to work in them. That, that possibly.
Well, actually.
Longer we need them.
So something, a, just a mission, you have to have one for the project. It's not, it hasn't been in any of the ordinances that we've read, so does it really, so it must just be an assumed thing that?
Yeah. Either that, or they don't own it, and they, the, I mean, the utility owns that.
Right.
Yeah, you know, so I don't know.
So if we don't have it in this ordinance, uh, I would, I would think we wouldn't need a definition. Okay, page twelve?
So are you taking?
Well, substation is where all your electricity comes in before it gets transferred.
Was referred to in this. Several places.
I mean, we're best.
Same place as the best.
Or best.
It was just in the, um, that one section. That we went to the best out, that's the only place it was in.
So none of your other ordinances, not for all of this, is at all? You saw it, then you're in the same line, with us and say substations are not covered under this ordinance, or? And refer to the.
I know you weren't up about it.
Refer to the standard conditional use.
Or no, they can't send your electricity in without a substation.
No.
Because it goes from direct.
But you own, yes, and rules, and I guess that's, and we need to define, and we need to, yeah, we need to define that, I guess. I don't know.
Some, yeah, there.
Let's do a little investigation.
Putting this project together, engineer, bringing up all the data, and giving all the dimension and all this stuff like this. You know, all the information about the substation, what kind of laggers, reactors they have, what kind of interruptors that are there, kind of transponder, all that, some specification would also need to be included. And, uh. Uh, substations, not just a fast machine, or like, there's, it's her twenty acres, or something, I don't know.
And if we don't have, I wanna get something more vague, like any other structures associated with this that are not solar panels need to be included on. The personal, personal need to be included in your conditions permit?
According to this, substations are primarily owned and operated by electric utility companies. So does that mean wherever they're gonna have come in, I get the electricity, it's gonna have to get the permit?
From this, he's gonna, he's gonna build the substation.
Yeah.
Which would, except salt creek, for the winds building their own substation for their own project, so I didn't know solar was the same. Cause the current wind ordinance does not have any.
But when the lion buys off these towers, and they'll be buying the substation that goes with it.
I don't know, I'll find out.
Well, so far, and I have all these references we've had so far, I'm gonna forget the name, you know, I don't have it. But our wind ordinance does not mention substations either, and that's a figure part that came up as an issue with the current project that's going on.
And what is the issue?
That they did not include it with their conditional use permit. Location to get approved, and then they also didn't include it separately when they were building on ag land to get a conditional use permit, so I don't know if you, just from the paperwork side of things, the clerical side. And I mean, we don't even know what other structures they might include, if they need nuclear electrical towers, like wind turbines do, that would be another structure, if, where if they're using a parcel land that is ag land, they would include conditions. I mean, otherwise, I think it would revert to just the regular zoning ordinance, or anything on ag land being a conditional use permit, but that's not always there in the ordinance.
Agreed, right, in this whole ordinance, would it be better to put the substation in the ordinance? Than to have somebody have to come back in five or 10 years and say, and go through the mess they're going through with towers? And put it in black and white now, instead of?
You could make it vague, it'd just be any additional structures.
We have, we have like a site plan, and looking for all the structures, the development plan, so we plan, all that stuff has to be planned in there, I think we just need a. Need a, need a good, defined substation.
Alright.
To that.
So, yeah, you guys want to.
Transform this.
Definition, that's fine, I just wanted to bring that issue up because it's probably an issue that undergoes, and it has similar problems.
Transformation and, and equipments associated with transforming, I think, power generated to voltage of use by the. Hill.
So, um, see.
Yes or no, putting a substation back into definitions? Yeah, no?
I, I think I would.
Yeah.
But, but with that, I should.
One word could do what?
That's okay, I'm just looking to see if there was anything, and there's nothing in any of those. Other, other ordinances, so. So then. Get Carol to take care of my next one, and then you go on.
So did the, and when, they did not file any permits or anything else, or they built the? Is that what you're saying?
They did not get a conditional use permit for the substation that they, and then, I don't know if they. How they claimed to Bob, so that he gave, he gave them a building permit without having the conditional use permit, so I think they were claiming that this one, I have. I have a condition, credit update, and that said, we will need a substation and biological towers, but we don't have that location yet. And that was not approved on the vote, so. They're claiming it got approved with the project because it was listed as we'll need this eventual structure, but it never, the parcel never got approved or through the whole process. So in this case, it'd be, if they have a separate. Parcel of land, separate from what they're getting from the solar panels, would they know from your current ordinance or looking at our other ordinance that they would need to have a conditional use permit for that as well? To get approval for that? To get approval for that as part of the siteing permit or something else. So. I think it would just be any additional structure, and you have it in the siteing permit where you have additional structures need to be.
Get that covered for you, we'll definitely pay.
Yeah. Just that, since we've mentioned substation, the same as the best. Except you had us as a demonstration.
So we've lost substation as a definition.
I'd say maybe the same way that the vessel.
We're going around in circles on this.
Yeah, yeah, I don't.
If you don't think you need, that's fine. If you just wanna say any additional parcels. Need to follow the nineteen ninety eight Tampa County zoning ordinance for conditional use permits. That would push it off to that and you, and then you wouldn't need more than a sentence for your ordinance. And you could include that for any additional structures, since we don't know what other structures they may need.
That's, the technology's changing some.
Right, so that that can cover you for any additional structures that need to follow. Nineteen ninety eight Tampa County zoning ordinance as far as conditional use permitting is required.
Yeah.
I don't feel that in the definition, or you want that in one of your other citing.
Why don't you write that out when you just said so fast? So Carol can get it.
By the section where you're ready to type is almost right.
Uh, so what is the definition or is it just gonna go definition? Okay, so then hang on, let me just get this ready and. Okay. Give me the definition, if I remember what I said. Any additional structures.
Such as the substations.
IP substation. Usually is.
Well, we're putting it under definition of substation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Such as, okay, an additional structure such as a substation.
Would need to be. Reference, or would need to reference. The nineteen ninety eight Tampa County. Zoning ordinance. In regards to conditional use permits. Can I just put C U B or do I need to write out conditional use permit? I use. I'm just filling it out.
Okay.
Conditionally permanent. So we're not really defining substation, but we're directing anyone who has that word to go look up.
Substations are listed on this. Nineteen oh two point four. Activities permitted by conditional use. So I don't know if you need to reference that. I don't know. Some of the front first page.
Yep, I see that. So, yeah, as far as the definition for the solar ordinance, you're referring them to this ordinance, they can look up.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think that'd work. Alright, it's in. Sorry for all the talk around.
Move the night long.
Page twelve. Uh, yes, five oh one, eight. The weight agreement, are we, did that become six hundred?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to change that to section six hundred eight.
U S, S E S, S F. E S, maybe go, um, the definition on page seven.
Yeah, that was just one of those things where I think we missed the acronym when we went through.
Page, page seven. U S F P S, this is F P S, the utility scale lower under the definition. Do, you know, utility scale, S E S, and which is U S S E S. So, and that's what U S S E S is. But they define it as, as F P S, so that's just, which is what we use all the material where. So if you look at bottom, page seven. The, the definition here, S F P S, is a utility scale, S E S, U S. S E S, which is basically what U S S E S is.
And I think the little rest of the order to use the U S.
Right, and every, every one of the new ordinance.
So I think that was just, we need to make that match.
So where are we at?
Five oh two.
Or we change, or not?
Change the bold U S S C S.
Okay.
Into S F P S. Five oh two.
Five oh two.
Yeah, they get there.
Everywhere else in the ordinance is called utility scale.
Five oh two. Still, we need to change this to.
Yes.
S. Let's get my new page. Um, it's five oh three point two I. Plan shall show property lines setback distances under section three below. Uh, I wasn't sure what we referenced. Where are you at?
Yeah.
Page fourteen, number I.
Oh, you went past the conditional use permit application?
I think there's. You know, the formatting, I mean, I'll fix that.
So this in right here, it says change to initial use permit, we're not?
Skip that, we'll skip that, it takes us a while.
Okay, so now we're at where?
Page fourteen, uh, five oh three point two I. Five oh three.
Okay.
Okay, where it says. Step back distances under section three below. Where relevant. I don't remember where it's at, where setback distance is, of course, we need to. Clarify which section you were talking about.
Well, okay, the three, the three little I's, I think. Plan will show topographical conditions, set along.
No, it's not supposed to be about property lines and setback distances.
Oh, yeah.
Or we have that.
But it's a half. Um, I know you have setback distances in your sighting permit, is it previous page? Um. Would it be page nine, four oh four?
Yeah.
So, say under section four hundred, I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, you could say.
Meaning is we got, we got a lot of.
Or just go vague and say section four hundred and whatever you were calling your guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so section four hundred. Um, and the jump down in E of the same page, locations of the designated three main areas as required in. That also be section four hundred?
Four five.
Yeah.
Got it, sorry.
Okay.
You touched that girl? Yes, okay. Um, we already. Can't remember, page fifteen is the one we looked at before. It's another applicant developer owner, did we get that one?
Yeah, we put the applicant. So we need to go back to.
No, it's, give that, there's one line and sentence on page eighteen. That I wasn't sure if it was another section or if it needed to go in a section. It's between five oh three and five oh four.
We, I don't know what this, that's been in there since the beginning. No ma'am, no ma'am. It was in there, it's been there since we started working on this. And I, and I, I don't know if it just, if it's just kind of, we started there.
Find ourselves a thing or. One oh one, purpose and intent needs to be in compliance with all Tampa County zoning ordinance. Need not read any further.
Yeah.
I just, that was like just in the middle randomly, I was like, oh, I don't know what to do with this.
Well, I think originally, we thought it had to be attached to something and never put it.
I didn't know it was attached to something in the.
No, it was not attached to anything.
Take another.
Okay.
With the application.
What?
But you just don't render it out.
Yeah, I just took it out, cause I'm not sure what we even meant by it.
Okay, um. Let's see. Did we fix page twenty two, six oh four point three?
Yes.
Okay, and page twenty three. I know you guys were talking about that, you've come to the conclusion of combining the one notification prior to construction.
I have a script.
When I said we should. A and then B. And it keeps moving, I gotta stop touching it.
Okay, but six oh five. Has two sections, so six has two sections. And they're both about notifications. So one about notification to local officials and one about notification property owners. I didn't know if you wanna combine it all into one, notifications prior to construction.
Oowners, local owners there.
I think she said it would. What?
I think it did this one.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I wouldn't combine them, they need to separate, right?
They need to separate, okay.
So then should that be six oh, six point one, six oh, six point two rather than A and B?
There is already six oh six point two.
Well, the six oh two point two should be a B. Okay.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because under six oh five, construction and notification of local officials. Those next two are called six oh five point one, six oh five point two. Then under six oh six, you have construction, notification of property owners.
We have six oh six point one, and then A, and then six oh six point two.
Well, that got taken out, so that's what I need to know. Okay, six, so that should be six oh.
I thought it was just gonna be six hundred, six oh six, and then. A, no, six oh six. And then just A B. Right? Cause there is no two.
There wasn't six oh six point two.
Well, that got changed to B. And that's why I didn't know.
Look at their original one.
It weighs in there, it's pretty.
This is. The one for construction, official property, and there's, and then there's a one.
So they have these separate nerves.
Yeah, this part. Powers of B, this part goes A.
But I think it needs to be said the same way as the other.
Probably two instead of.
The thirtieth, the twenty fifth, or the.
Thirtieth, okay. No, it's fine. I just, it seemed weird that we had two separate sections, but if that's how you got it. Yeah, okay. No, that's fine, it was, yeah, um, page twenty four, six oh seven point three. Okay, so wait a minute.
This one, three two?
No.
He, he said you guys pulled it over and you're mad at him, so.
So that should be left to.
Six oh five is with the Tampa County people? Six oh six is with the.
Maybe.
Private public people.
Right.
So that's all the difference.
I don't think you live in B.
A B and just playing six hundred, six oh six. But they said, no, I don't know. I think it was one and two, there was one and two there before.
Possibly.
It was one and two, it was one and then A and then B. And then it turns this to B, I don't know.
So, this got changed, so I love that, but this, I don't know, that is not. Do you also get put six oh six point one here?
No, no, we don't have, it's a sick, like. Basically, we're copying this. Here, so construction property owners, that's six hundred. Six oh six. And then we have a one, which is the A.
So this piece here doesn't need anything, is that what you're saying? Okay.
That's six, and then we have the one, which is the A.
Okay.
And B, it's the two.
Okay, so we're keeping all that. Page twenty four. Six oh seven point three.
This is, this is.
Yeah, I'm changing.
It's just kind of.
It got changed, okay, I missed that, sorry. Um, and we fixed seven oh three, right? The section B of this article?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Everything that's in you guys have probably already went through. Um. So going back to where it said sighting permit, I'll try to do this quick for you guys, sorry. Page thirteen. Section five oh three. Sighting permits and required documents. So in the nineteen ninety eight zoning ordinance and the. Amendment for the wind, they reference conditional use permits, and you guys all have sighting permits, so. I mean, I. If you want to do the sighting permit and I create a new separate permit document, that's fine. If you want to reword it as conditional use permit and have all those as your conditional use permit documents. We could do that. Um, if you want to do sighting permits and then just say your conditional use permit charge is still this. Um, we currently charge seventy five dollars for conditional use permit application.
Then would it just change it to conditional permit?
Which is easier for you, yeah.
And then we still need to add the part about the charge, cause the cost covers. Pu- public notification newspaper and the postage, which we might need to consider raising that. I haven't had a lot of time to research that.
What's easier for you, though, to change it to conditional content, to the sighting permit, since you've already got that?
I think it would be easier for me if you change it to conditional use permit, but this isn't just for me, so it'd be like, we're already in a sighting permit better. Alright, I'm gonna do it right now.
Okay.
And then the sighting plan would can, would be just about.
It can still say a site plan, um.
No, no, I was just saying, the site plan would be about the actual site where your cup would be.
And it would be a part of your.
Yeah.
Needing to submit for conditional use permit. Um. So, yeah, back in nineteen ninety eight, I really don't think this cost has changed at all. The conditional use permit charge was seventy five dollars. And newspaper notifications have gone up, post, so just gone up fifty dollars. So I don't even know if I'm. I think I'm losing money, so.
I think would that. Cover most everything?
Fee per cup, is that what you're saying?
At the time, a special use permit is requested a fee of seventy five dollars be paid.
If you don't wanna worry about changing this in the future, you could just say. Matching the conditional use permit fee to the nineteen ninety eight zoning ordinance, it would be a little low right now, but hopefully eventually you guys would be able to review that. To make it universal. Thing you need to remember is it's not just big companies getting cups, it is also regular citizens getting cups. So if you wanna charge higher for a large project, you would need that in your application fee that we talked about last week.
Isn't that kind of the board of supervisors what they're gonna charge?
It would have to get approved through them, yes, you know, so I would say, at this point.
They know the financial account.
Yep, and I would say at this point, to prevent you having to come back and fix this if you do change the cost. To reference the cost in the nineteen ninety eight Tampa County zoning ordinance. Where the fee is listed, and then you don't have to come back and change this if you change that. Does that, does that make sense? So that's just my recommendation, you guys can discuss. But I do think you need to mention that there is a conditional use permit fee, separate from your application fee of the project, separate from the building permit fee.
That you get from G?
So G, what she had there is just fee for the conditional use permit application due before hearing will be set. The amount is set to Tampa County six point one zoning ordinance.
So that's just the fee to file.
For a conditional use permit, yeah. Which previously, last week, we talked about having an application fee for a project of this size. So that would be on top of a conditional use permit fee. And separate, so I don't know if you need to include that that would be separate from your application fee, so there was no confusion.
This has nothing to do with a twenty five hundred dollar fee to top.
No, this is strictly covering. So do we. Getting the board adjustment to me. Same thing, this is separate from. I would say so. Put it right in, right in with that one? Yes, um, wherever that section's at, I would reference that. Cause that application fee was covering the cost of the county to review it versus the conditional use permit fee is covering the cost of. The board of adjustment meeting and all its notifications.
Says the money's gonna go right into the general fund of Tampa County, seventy five bucks, is what it says.
Yeah. Alright, so at the end of just that first thing, the paper conditional use, it just says separate from the application fee. Do we need to put that down with the application fee as well? Oh, and then that first, it could not just stay there. I mean, under application fee, you could specify this is separate from your conditional use permit. Um, it's at your site plan somewhere. But at least that covers the carryover between multiple different ordinances, making it match. And then I'll just, if you guys are okay with it, I'll just go through. And then I'll just, if you guys are okay with that, I'll just go through and change every placement, say, for him to change that to conditional use. Okay. I'll make a note for that. See, Carol, can I have to do it?
I might, I think I did a few of them.
We're getting into pretty late time here, I think we should wrap the.
I think that was the end of my notes, so. Do you guys want to set a public hearing? You guys ready for it or do you need another quick review?
I don't think it's just a quick review.
I mean, we should be ready, but it's next meeting start.
Uh, last time we talked about the thirtieth, does that still work for everybody? The Wednesday?
Last, last day of the month.
Yeah, thirtieth will work for me.
Yeah.
That'll work for you, Jody?
Right now.
Okay.
It'd be six o'clock here. We could make that into a public hearing if you want to. You ready for that? Carol, do we need any more proof?
And if nobody showed up for it.
Oh, I think people will show up for it.
What are they, you're gonna read through the, you're gonna have copies of all this to be done?
I think I'm gonna try to post the draft online, so people can see ahead of time.
Pretty well, right? You should be.
I didn't see any other glaring grammar or spelling errors, did you, Carol?
There's.
I didn't, um.
Well, and the board of supervisors is gonna do it too.
Only thing is that stupid formatting, but.
I'll fix it. Um, I can send it out to each of you for final, yeah, looks good type of thing. Um, before I post a copy, I, I think I could post a copy online as a draft. Um, I just have to work out with Michelle how to do it. Um.
And that would be a public meeting on the thirty.
We'll make the thirtieth into a public hearing. I still need to verify if we need more than one. If we don't get a huge turnout, I think we could waive any future ones, but I will double check that. Uh, the supervisors, I know, are supposed to have three but could waive final ones. I don't know that there's the same requirement for you guys, I have to look into that a little further, but we'll set the thirtieth for the first hearing.
Ordering today.
If we need more, we'll figure that out at a later time. I will get that posted this week for public notice.
And thank for, thank for supervisors coming up.
I don't, no, because you need the public hearing before you send your recommendations to supervisors, so maybe one will show up, maybe two. They can't have a forum.
Well, at least they can deal with comments.
Okay, so.
You can include your comments and your recommendation to the supervisors, I believe.
Where did we put in here about the application fee of seventy five dollars? I know it's in here.
Me, twenty five hundred?
Twenty five hundred?
Yes.
Um.
I tried to do a search, but it's not showing me.
Well, there are a lot more numbers now to search.
Yeah.
See. Did you guys add that?
I thought we did, we can do that.
By the.
Permitting and review procedure? Oh, it's at the beginning, isn't it at the beginning?
No, I saw it.
Well, if she saw it, then it should be in there, because I only sent her the recent one.
There it is.
What page?
Um, eighteen.
Okay.
Applications for a citing permit of nearby payment of twenty five hundred dollars to county officials.
Okay, I want to add that.
Ooh, then that might be a problem with wording, because if we're calling a citing permit twenty five hundred and then we're changing all the citing permits to conditional use permits, that's a problem. We can add initially these permits separate. You need a conditional use permit along with your citing permit?
Or was this an application for just the project? Could you call a project application?
Project application fee.
So they kind of come first and then the.
The next one.
All project, we'll just put a structure yet.
I don't know.
Do we need to put it? Do we need to put an order to that then? Get your conditional use permit first, but most of the stuff you have in your citing permit is stuff they would need for the cup.
Right. All right, I'm going to change this right now to all project applications shall be accompanied by a payment of an administrative fee in twenty five hundred I.
Do you want to say all utility scale solar projects, just to be specific? Or do you need to be specific with that?
Okay. Still letting you to. So a project application. Of the.
And then we can still change all the citing permits to cups, then that won't cause a problem? Okay.
Oh, I'm done.
Good job, guys.
Before we quit, I just want to say thank you, everyone. And I want to ask, do we put discussing the finding community solar on our next agenda, just in case we don't have a big public hearing here?
Yeah.
We could. We keep pushing that one.
Keep pushing it back.
Go say that again.
If we don't have a big public hearing, he wants to have to start discussion of community solar at the end of it.
But you have to pitch what you've sent out of the.
Well, she wouldn't, because she, I didn't know, I didn't know that.
I was on entity.
Pulled that up on the map, it was the outside diameter was pretty much the size of what occurred, but the spacing was quite a bit.
Well, and I did, I did send an email to Raccoon Valley whatever they call themselves, um, and asked for additional information. I've not heard back yet, so. So I just wanted to sound like, I wanted to know, like would they have an ordinance for this or, you know, what's.
Like a great way to go, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Do, remember when we first started discussing this, we had an ordinance from on county. And it was really good for the service, you know where that came from, hey, going back to last night, I guess.
Is this for the community?
Really laid out well.
So is that community as a town or community as individuals?
Oh, countryside.
Like a co-op or something?
You're like, so we're Grundy R E C, so Grundy R E C's a big deal, you know, if there was a they wanted to do a community solar, it would be something that they would, I think they would arrange.
But it would be something that'd be on, uh, in unincorporated land, which is what they would be this group regulates versus.
Somewhere, some of.
She's all working.
Like aprices on this?
Pushing it to be like on. Bam and industrial property, places like that, that have already been something in the past.
But if it's in the city limits, you guys wouldn't have any jurisdiction over that zoning. So it'd be, it'd be like, you know how Traya's got their winter buying out country, so that's in unincorporated, so it'd be, I mean, that helps Traya municipals, right? So I think it does. Supposedly.
It hasn't helped that much.
But it'd be, it'd be like that where.
Are you on Traya?
Big Brother was.
That, that'd be one option where the city uses it, but the, it's on unincorporated.
Right.
Or the other option, I think, is if like a co-op of farmers want to get together, I think that'd be an option. Which would also be on unincorporated land, so it'd be citing stuff that's on unincorporated.
So in other words, unincorporated land, but the power generated would be used locally. Not footing well. But the option is there, put it in the grid, but it still goes into the grid, but it's.
You can own so many sections, you can own whatever, instead of putting it on your roof, you've got it in a different.
So citizens can buy a subscription to it, I believe, um, and then you get the units back. I'm not totally clear on that. Um.
You get.
Yeah, you get credit, you get credit in the winter for what you produced in the summer.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second?
Move second, adjourn, then sketch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.
So I was assuming now I could probably, some of these ordinances, I don't have to bring anymore.
I'm sorry, who motioned, who seconded? I missed it.
I think Steve.
You were all in a rush to leave.
Most of them will say Jody seconded.
Steve motioned.
We're high, you're right.
And Jody second, okay. Uh, we did not specifically ask for public comment, but Al did not comment and Karen's not in the room anymore, so we'll call that good.
You think we'll get a turnout?
I think we will. I don't know that it'll all be Tampa County residents, but I think we'll get a turnout.
Well, that's okay.
Sure.
Bring it on.
All right, good job, guys.
Yeah, come on.
Thank you, we are another thing.
Yes.
Yes, I will.
I'm gonna send it to you.
Okay, yep, the word doc, I will go through the formatting and un-highlight everything. How was your first meeting? You survived?